Committee meeting. I'll hand over to Abby to announce housekeeping arrangements. Thanks, Abba.
Thank you, Chair. In the event of the fire alarm sounding, please take instruction from staff and stewards. The assembly point is Tudor Square. Please can I request everyone to switch mobile devices to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? The meeting today will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. While the meeting is open to the public, photography, video and sound recording of the proceedings is permitted. However, the Chair has discretion to withdraw or suspend this permission, for example, if the recording is disrupting the conduct of the meeting or is being undertaken in a manner which could capture personal information, or in the event that a member of the public participating in a meeting objects to being recorded. Thank you, Chair.
I will now ask each member to introduce themselves. I'm Alan Woodcock, I'm the Chair for today and I'm councillor for East Ecclesfield. Bernard?
Hello, my name's Bernard Littleon, councillor for Walkley and the Green councillor in this meeting. Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Tony Downey, councillor for Mossborough Ward.
Good afternoon, my name's Ebi Ullla, councillor for Netheridge and Sherrill.
Hello, Laura Moynihan, Labour councillor for Manor Castle.
Roger Davidson, Ecclesall Ward councillor.
Glynnis Chapman, Liberal Democrat from Mossborough Ward.
Barbara Masters, councillor for Ecclesall Ward.
Cliff Woodcraft, councillor for Fullwood.
Thank you, everybody. Apologies for absence to everybody. I mean...
Thank you, Chair. We've had apologies from councillor Mike Chaplin and councillor Gary Wetherall and councillor Tony Downs is acting as substitute for councillor Wetherall. Thank you.
We don't have any items for exclusive to the public press, so I will now ask if anybody's got any declarations of interest. Well, thank you. Shall we go to the minutes of the previous meeting? Can we take page thirteen? Forty?
No, page ten. Page ten.
Ten?
Page ten. No, page nine, sorry.
Yep. Sorry, what did it go? Page nine. Page ten. Page eleven doesn't come there. Thank you. Can I have a poser, please? There, okay. Yep. Thank you. Next is site visits. We're eight in time for the next site visit. We'll be on Monday the fourth of December and that will be notified to members in their diary. Thank you. Item seven of the agenda today is proposal to divert part of footpath S H E five six five at Brunswick School linking Bridgie Street and Station Road Woodhouse at thirteen. Um...
Mark?
Oh.
Thank you, Chair. The next slide on, please. Okay, we've received an application to divert the footpath that currently goes through the Brunswick School site. This is on the grounds of security and privacy and in doing so will make the site more secure. The first slide shows the solid black line as the current route of the footpath with the proposed diversion as a dashed line going from point C to E. Next slide, please. This is the entrance from Station Road. This also serves as part of a pedestrian access to the school. Next slide? So, yeah, next slide, please. This is looking from the entrance on Station Road down towards, going towards Bridgie Street, which is between points A and B. You can see the open nature of the path. It provides no security really to the playing fields. There's locked gates that enter into the school site on the left-hand side and a locked gate that goes into the multi-use sports facility there. Next slide, please. And again. Next slide, sorry. Yeah, so that's looking towards Station Road from the sports centre and the school perimeter. As I said, it is unlit. There's no adjacent lighting on either the sports facility or the school site that would light that path. Next slide, please. And again. Okay. This is looking from Bridgie Street into the playing field site at point C. That entrance won't, isn't proposed to change. And again, that is unlit. This part of Bridgie Street is an unmade road. It's an unadopted part. And there's no proposal to change that part. Next slide, please. This is looking from Station Road towards the new proposed entrance. It is an existing track that feeds the school playing fields that's utilised by service vehicles for grass cutting and things like that. It's not lit, but there is a lighting column at the end of it that would remain in place, providing some light into the entrance of the path. Next slide, please. And again, sorry. And that's looking from the Bridgie Street entrance where Bridgie Street meets the playing fields, looking up towards it. So you can see it's quite an open grass area at the moment. The proposal is to put a tarmac path there, approximately two metres wide. Next slide, please. And that's just an aerial view of the site. You can see the path as it comes down from Station Road. It's open, playing fields, and then the proposed route on the left-hand side behind the sports facility up to Station Road.
Thank you, Mark. Cliff?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, just a query. You mentioned lighting and I'm sort of acutely aware that we have an issue in Fullwood with a path which has a dog leg in it and it can get a bit dark and feel unsafe. Are you satisfied that the arrangements for the lighting are adequate for this?
Mark?
Thank you, Chair. As I said, the current route is unlit. It is very dark on there at night. Ideally, we would like to see it lit. The, there's two potential outcomes of the diversion. One, the path will be provided at a like-for-like standard, so it will be provided to the standard it currently is. The other is that it will be lit and adopted and maintained by the street's head contract. That's not been decided which way that will go yet because there's commuter sums involved in that. So what we're seeking here at the moment is approval to make the order that diverts the path. The detail of the design of the path will follow, but it won't be any lesser standard than it currently is. So it's not lit currently. There is the lighting at the end of Station Road where the entrance to the path is, which will provide some light into it.
Is that okay, Cliff?
Yes, okay. I mean, just to encourage, encourage you with regard to the lighting. We want people to feel safe.
Tony?
Yeah, I, thank you. I've noticed that, reading the short report, that there's been no objections. Is that right? There's no objection put down here to it. Thank you.
Mark?
Thank you, Chair. There's no objections from the consultations that we've made. Those consultations aren't public. The public consultation will follow with the making of the order, so all properties that book the proposed site and members of the public and utilities will be consulted formally at that stage. We've have consulted local walking groups. As you've seen in the report, they have suggested that arguably the proposed route will be more convenient than the current route.
Bernard?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Chair. Is the school happy with the proposed new route?
Thank you, Chair. The application is from the Education Department. It is them that have suggested the new route.
Any more questions, observations? Can we take the vote, please?
Yes, I'm supporting this application.
Tony?
Well...
Tony?
For the application, Chair.
Ebi? Laura?
Support the application.
Yes, I also support the application.
Supporting the application.
Support the application.
Support the application.
Thank you, that's best. We're going to take a short, a very, very short break. And I mean, a very, very short break, a five minutes. We have something to discuss up here. Let me, yeah, send out for some, Tony. So is everybody in agreement with that, including people on the bike? Let me just carry on. I mean, well, I have a comfort break and I think you'll, no idea where the toilets are outside of the town hall, but I'm sure if you need one, you'll find one. They'll all be in the same position, yeah, of course they will. Yeah, so we're going to carry on now, are we? Yep. Thank you, everybody. Right, we have four applications today. Item eighty, planning application number twenty-three stroke zero-one-nine-six-zero, F W L Park Hill Estate, Duke Street, Park Hill, Sheffield, S two. Page twenty-one of the agenda. So I'll hand it over to... Is it Jacob doing it? Sarah doing it? Jacob?
Yeah, it's me for this one. I'll just wait till we've got the slides back, if that's okay. Okay, so if we just take it through a few slides. Bit more, there we go. Thanks, Chair. So, actually, next slide again, please. So, as Chair said, this application is for the refurbishment of the easternmost block at Park Hill Estate to provide one hundred and twenty-five dwellings and two commercial units with associated landscaping and car parking. The applications are being presented to committee due to significant public interest. And there are two applications, so there's a full planning application for the development and a listed building consent application which covers the refurbishments to the listed building and alterations. So over the two applications and over multiple advertisement periods, there have been a total of one hundred and forty-four objections and two supportive comments. And I must apologize, it says in the report and in the supplementary that it's one hundred and forty-three, that's my maths, it is definitely one hundred and forty-four. Just referring to the supplementary information, there have been four further objections since the committee report was published, but those are all from people who had previously commented on the scheme, so the total number of objections is unchanged since the committee report. And all of those comments were broadly related to the same issues that were covered in the report and which I'll deal with later in the presentation. That's around green space and car parking in the main. There is one point that wasn't covered substantially in the report around safety of the green spaces, but I'll cover that later in the presentation as well. Next slide, please. Thank you. So I think most people will know Park Hill. It's an iconic brutalist grade-two star listed building, built as social housing between nineteen fifty-seven and nineteen sixty-one by the Corporation of Sheffield. It sits in an elevated position to the east of the city centre and the railway station and it's surrounded by residential development on all of the sides. After falling into disrepair in the nineteen nineties, outline planning permission for the refurbishment and redevelopment of the whole estate was granted in two thousand and six. Since then, three out of five main phases of the development have been completed. So phase one is the block to the north. Phase two is the central block which is shaped like a horse shoe. That is just to the west of the application site. And this aerial image is a little bit out of date, so there is a fully landscaped courtyard now in phase two as well. Phase three is just at the bottom of the screen there and that's a student accommodation block. Phase five, you can't see in that aerial image, but it's just further to the south. And this application is dealing with phase four, which is the eastern block at Duke Street. So although there was an outline permission in two thousand and six, phase three actually departed from that outline, so that's because it was a student development which wasn't originally part of the outline permission. So from phase three onwards, the rest of the phases are being dealt with independently. There has been a previous consent for phase four which included a new build art gallery in the position of the existing garage block, which is occupied by S one Art Space, but that permission has now lapsed. And this new proposal excludes the garage block from the application site and that might be the subject of potential future development, but it's not covered in this application. The new phase four proposal is a much simpler conversion which has no new build elements. There's no policy requirement for an art gallery in this location and a straightforward residential conversion does allow for more of the original fabric of the listed building to be retained. So in principle, this next phase is supported. Next slide, please. So these are just some photos taken from the design and access statement that was submitted for the application, giving an overview of the phase four block. This block has three main wings or flanks and it ranges between seven and nine storeys in height. It's nine storeys at the northern end and then as the ground level rises towards the south, then the number of storeys diminishes. And you can just see from the photos on the right-hand side of the screen, just the state that it's in now. So obviously it's fallen into disrepair and it needs a lot of refurbishment work. Next slide, please. And these are just a few of my own photos, so they're taken from within the courtyard of phase four and they show the state of the building as it is now. On the right-hand side, that's some of the ground floor flats that are obviously abandoned now. And on the bottom left-hand side, that shows the northern end of the block. And at the ground floor, there did used to be a pub there in that location where there's that graffiti. Next slide, please. And again, just some more photos of the building as existing. So the top left is the street side of the former pub at the northern end. And then the other photos are kind of showing the peripheral areas, so essentially the landscape buffer in between Duke Street and the block. And the bottom left is just the corner which is currently open and used to be an access point into the estate. Next slide, please. So these images basically illustrate kind of the original layout of the block and how the flats were arranged. So the key characteristic element of Park Hill is the streets in the sky and they occur at every three levels and they provide access to the apartments above and below the streets. On the opposite side of the block are a series of balconies which serve the individual flats. And then the concrete frame is infilled with brickwork which gets progressively lighter in colour every three floors towards the top of the building. So that essentially delineates the sort of separate street arrangements moving up the building. Next slide, please. And then within the block, the apartments are arranged generally in groups of four, which were arranged around three bays of the concrete frame over three floors and with two stairwells either side of an H-shaped concrete core. So within that arrangement, you'd have two doorways leading down to flats below the street and the other two doorways would lead to maisonette flats which were at street level and above the street. So that gave each flat a dual aspect with kind of high standards of daylight and sunlight. Next slide, please. So in terms of the proposals for phase four, the upper floors would be entirely residential with a range of flat types which broadly follow the original arrangement of the flats, although with some modernisations. If you can see the number fours on the image, which you might not be able to actually, but they're just at the ground floor on flank T, which is the one on the right-hand side of the screen, and then on flank R, which is the left-hand side. So those are the locations where there'd be some townhouse type flats. So that would involve infilling part of the street or the access deck in that location to create some maisonette types which are referred to as townhouses. The main entrances would be at either end, so positions one and eight, if you can read that on the plan, but essentially where there's the two cores at either end. And then there'd be two commercial units, one at the northern flank, which is position two, which if you can't read that, then it's just at the left-hand side where there's the sort of glazed element at ground floor. And then the other one would be at the corner at flank S. And then the courtyard would be landscaped and would be publicly accessible, all except for the lawn at position five, which is next to the flank on the left-hand side of the screen there, flank R. So that lawn would be for residents only, but the rest of it would be publicly accessible. And then at the bottom of that screen, the sort of white square, that represents the garage block which is excluded from this application. Next slide, please. So this is the lower ground floor proposed plan. It's referred to as level five because the levels are consistent across the whole estate. So obviously further towards the north, there are the lower levels, but level five represents the lower ground for this block and that's where there'd be the first commercial unit next to some ancillary bin and bike stores and substation. Next slide, please. On this level, you've got some of those townhouse types which infill the street. Next slide, please. Then on level seven, you've got the second commercial unit at the corner, additional ancillary space where there'd be more servicing and then some more townhouses. Next slide, please. And then I'm not going to show all of the upper floor plans, but this is a typical street plan which shows how the access deck snakes around the building and gives access to the apartments on either side with pairs of front doors directly off the access deck. Next slide, please. So these elevations just give an impression of, they're referred to as unfolded elevations, so it's essentially if you took each flank and put them in a straight line, but it just gives an impression of the overall works to the outside of the building, which would be generally pretty minimal. The main interventions would be the new windows, but you can see that the original layout of the brickwork and the balconies and the streets is maintained. Next slide, please. And then just a few flat types. So this is an example of a maisonette which is accessed from the street and is arranged over street level and above the street. Next slide, please. This is a smaller flat type which is located below the street, so you go straight downstairs into that flat. Next slide, please. And then this is an example townhouse type, so these are the ones at ground floor level that infill part of the street. So they kind of diversify the accommodation mix and provide a layout that's more typical of a kind of terraced family home. In terms of the accommodation mix, overall, there would be twenty-seven one-bedroom units, seventy-seven two beds, twenty-three beds and one four-bedroom flat. Majority of the flats would comfortably exceed the national space standards. There are some that would fall slightly short, but that's mainly only a minor shortfall of one or two square metres, or it might be that the flat itself exceeds the space standards overall, but the bedroom is slightly smaller. But overall, given the constraints of the listed building, we think it provides a high standard of amenity overall and every flat would be dual aspect with a balcony, in some cases, two balconies. Next slide, please. So this image shows a comparison between the facades as they are now and then the restored facades in phase two on the right-hand side. So the approach for phase two of Park Hill was to kind of limit the amount of intervention. So it's simple repairs to the concrete and the brickwork, new windows which would be aluminium with black frames and then limited introduction of colour to the balcony reveals to give a sense of identity to each apartment. So phase four would broadly replicate that approach that was taken at phase two. So the right-hand image is kind of an impression of what you'd expect it to look like after restoration. Next slide, please. And then just some visualisations of the scheme. So this is the commercial unit that'd be introduced at the north end when, where they used to be the pub. Next slide, please. This would be the entrance at the northern side, so there'd be some glazed infill to that ground floor just to create a bit of an entrance lobby. Next slide, please. And then again, some glazed infill at the southern entrance and the townhouse flat types are just located to the right-hand side of the entrance on that top image there. Next slide, please. So this plan shows the layout of external works as originally proposed. So the main source of objection for this proposal has been the inclusion of the two parking areas that you can see to the north of the building and they are on to existing green plattos and they're understood to be well-used by residents. So the initial proposal included parking for eighty-four cars, which equated to a sixty-nine percent parking provision, so the equivalent of one parking space for sixty-nine percent of the flats. So many residents did feel that that was excessive, given that the site is in a sustainable location where reliance on the private car can be reduced. So a lot of residents have requested additional support for active transport such as cycling instead and there were calls for a reduction in car parking. Next slide, please. Since then, the application has been amended to reduce the parking provision, so the northern plateau would be retained as green space and the parking provision would be reduced to sixty-five spaces, which would represent a fifty-two percent parking provision. And that'd be spread over the southern plateau, the existing parking area to the north of the garage block, and then also a small parking area serving the townhouses at the southern end, access from Road Street. Since the applications were submitted, the applicant has undertaken a survey of existing phase one and phase two residents, which found that fifty-nine percent of respondents had at least one vehicle and seventy-four percent of those car owners parked their vehicles in the Park Hill car parks, with the rest of them parking the cars on street or elsewhere. So we consider that the fifty-two percent parking provision in the amended proposals is an appropriate balance which prevents harmful on-street parking intensification whilst also reducing the impact on green space and lessening the harm to the setting of the listed building. It's important for members to note as well that a parking permitting scheme in the surrounding area has recently been rejected by Transport, Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee. So if, as the survey suggests, over half of the new residents did have a car and there was insufficient off-street parking provided, it would be difficult to restrict them from parking on the street and causing on-street parking congestion. Through conditions and a legal agreement, there would be support secured for sustainable transport to complement this reduced parking provision. So those measures would include a travel plan, the installation of live bus times displays and further details of cycle parking arrangements, electric vehicle charging points and car club spaces. Residents have also expressed concerns that pedestrians and cyclists would be put at risk by additional traffic using South Street and Pat Michley Lane to access the car park, but highways are satisfied that the additional traffic volumes would be minor and they wouldn't lead to a frequency of vehicle movements that would compromise the existing traffic harming layout and pedestrian dominance on those streets. And then with regard to kind of the safety of the green spaces near the access roads, again, it's felt that because there would be low vehicle movements, it wouldn't impact on the safety of those green spaces or their usability. In terms of the wildlife impact of losing one green space, the biodiversity net gain assessment does show that the landscaping in the wider scheme would more than compensate and the development would deliver a thirteen point four nine percent net gain in habitat units, as well as new hedgerow planting. In terms of open space provision, whilst there would be the loss of one green space, a larger green space would be introduced to the south of the garage block, which you can see on the site plan there. So that green space is not currently publicly accessible. So overall, with that new green space, there'd be a net increase of four hundred square metres of open space and informal open space in the local area would still exceed the guidance the guideline of two point seven hectares per one thousand residents. Next slide please. So just one more point on the green space. It's just worth noting that in the original Park Hill layout, the green plateaus that have been the subject of the objection which were proposed for the car parking, those were never originally green space. That was the location of the original Park Hill school. Next slide please. And also in the original master plan, which was approved in two thousand and six, there was an indicative proposal for a multi-storey car park between phases one and four. So again, that's in the location of those green plateaus that have been the subject of the objection. So with comparison to kind of Park Hill historically and in previous approvals, we do consider that this is a greener and less car centric proposal. Next slide please. So in summary, we do feel that the proposal brings substantial benefits in terms of regeneration, housing delivery and enhancements to the listed building. It would deliver a biodiversity net gain, and it would provide sufficient open space and appropriate reduced quantum of parking. The officer's recommendation is therefore to grant permission for the development, subject to a legal agreement for the bus times display, and to grant listed building consent for the renovation works. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. We have two speakers on this one. The first speaker is Dave Watkins. Please. No, you just press the, on the right hand side.
On the right hand side? Oh, that's it. Can I stand up or should I sit down?
No, up to you, but you've got five minutes.
Right, okay, I'll do my best to keep it, keep it as brief as I can. Can I just introduce myself first? My name's Dave Watkins. I've been to planning at Park Hill pretty much all the other phases. So phase two, I was here, phase three, I was here for the student development, and actually also phase four. And I was previously the chairman of Park Hill Residents' Association. So on those occasions, I came to support Urban Splash with their development, just in case something happened that we didn't get permission, because I'm in favour of Park Hill getting developed, and I still am, I still want it developed well. But I'm part of this green group, a green spaces group, that objected, and we got quite a lot, hundred and forty three, I think, wasn't it, objections? I thought it was more than that, but pretty much a ground roots movement that started because of the lack of consultation. Let me backtrack a bit as well before I go on to that. On one of the previous occasions when I was here for phase two, me and my friend Heather stood up here and actually got a condition imposed, and I'm hoping that today I can also get a condition imposed on this development regarding cycle use and that kind of thing. I suppose my main point really, before I go on, that I want to make is this compromise arrangement that Jacob's just been telling everyone about is really not, still not supported by the residents, and we don't feel that we were involved in that process at all. And I think at this point, we really feel a bit defeated, because it seems like planning and Urban Splash have got together, got this plan, but they haven't really addressed any of our concerns in it, and we're still hopping mad about it, even though it looks like it's all going to go through now. On the previous planning applications, there was really good consultation of residents by Urban Splash. So for instance, you know, there was opportunity to go and meet the architects, there'd be models, you could talk to people about it. On this occasion, pretty much nothing. I think there was a Zoom meeting that, I think, some people found out about by accident. It was like, there was really no opportunity to sit down and discuss these things with Urban Splash. And I think the reason that we had this kind of a bit of a movement start was simply because of this perceived perception that Urban Splash were trying to pull something here, you know, that they were trying to slip past these car parks, past residents, and get it quietly signed off. Well, we didn't agree with that, and we still don't. The response really to all these protests really was this survey, and I really want to pick holes in this as well. It was an online survey, and from virtually first question, it seemed like it was biased. It seemed that we were being led down this road to provide data that would support Urban Splash's position, rather than a kind of neutral kind of questions. It was all leading questions. It was all questions where sometimes the option that you wanted to support, like for instance, how many times do you use this actual, actively use this green space? You couldn't put anything like less than once a week. Do you know what I mean? It was, it was pretty much rubbish anyway, the survey, and I would urge you to disregard it, and it'd be very interesting to hear today how many people responded to that survey, because, I don't know, we weren't given any kind of access to it. What did it say kind of thing, you know, and how many people answered it? Because it was a very low number of people, of course, it's statistically insignificant. Right. Anyway, that's why the Green Group formed. And I think we did quite well, I'm quite pleased that we got all these objections. It was all really grassroots stuff. It wasn't like some fantastic organised campaign or anything, it just started from nothing really. And at least, I suppose, we have achieved one less lawn. But I do really want to make a point here that Urban Splash, they do talk a good green talk, but when you actually look down on it, look at it in detail, they're not really, their priority really is making money here, rather than provision of any kind of green stuff for people. If you look at cycle storage on all the different phases, phase one, when I moved in, there was no cycle storage, and we kind of sorted it out as residents in the end. But there was a condition on the plan in for provision of cycle service, but we had to really, really push and push Urban Splash to actually come up with that. And at the moment, we've got thirty six spaces, which are well overused, and it's a really nice cycle store, but we really had to work for it with Urban Splash to get those. Phase two, still haven't got, how many years have they been in there now, adequate cycle storage? There's something wrong with doors, people don't trust the, sorry, is that my five minutes?
Yes, you have five minutes.
All right, I'm going to be really, really quick, but the cycle storage still isn't up to date, and what I would like really as a condition on this is that you don't sign up on this development phase four until that cycle, that cycle storage is in place, is actually in place and usable. Because it wasn't in phase one, it wasn't in phase two, it was in phase three, but that was a different developer that developed it, and they did it properly. For phase four, they're promising cycle storage, but here we are, their evidence so far is that they don't put that in, and then move on, and it doesn't become a priority. And I think the same can be said for the electric charging points. Are they going to put those in, or are they just talking words?
I'll ask you to finish now, Dave, please.
Second?
Ask you to finish, please.
Right, okay. I'm asking that you would put a condition on that those, the cycle storage and the electric point charging are, as a condition before the thing is signed off and people move in, otherwise it'll never get done.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Steve Thomas, who's speaking on behalf of Laffy Guns. Can you go to that one?
Yeah, yeah.
Steve, please. Again, you have five minutes.
Very much. Are we on? Can you hear me? Firstly, thanks to the Chair for the opportunity to speak. My name's Steve Thomas, Development Manager at Urban Splash. I'm responsible for the day-to-day regeneration of the Park Hill estate. Excuse me. Urban Splash have a long history of Park Hill, spanning back almost twenty years. It's a place we're extremely passionate about, and alongside our partners, Places for People, we're committed to realising the original master plan vision set out in the outline permission in two thousand and six. Phase four marks the next step in this long journey, and as the penultimate phase of Park Hill, it'll build on both a thriving mixed-use community that's already been created, and a hundred million pounds already invested, moving the estate one step closer to completion. We welcome the officer's recommendation to approve these applications, as they reflect the significant amount of hard work and collaboration from both ourselves and a multitude of other stakeholders. Park Hill is one of the most ambitious regeneration projects in the UK, and so far, the first three completed phases have proved hugely successful. These are made up of four hundred and fifty five private homes, around a hundred of which are affordable, three hundred and fifty six student beds, and fifty thousand square feet of commercial and office space, hosting a range of diverse occupiers, including children's nursery, new pub, hairdressers, convenience store and many other businesses. The phase four proposals will comprise of a further one hundred and twenty five high-quality residential homes on a site already identified for housing, ranging from one-bed apartments to a four-bed and townhouses, twenty percent of which will be operated as affordable discount market rent outside of this planning permission. The result of this will be a significant positive contribution to meet Sheffield's identified housing needs, and also ensure the long-term conservation and protection of this iconic grade two star listed building. The proposals also include over four and a half thousand square feet of ground floor commercial and amenity space, which will provide opportunities for local businesses and will create new jobs. Given the recent success of phase two, we've retained the same award-winning architects, Michael Riches, and the rest of the consultant team, to ensure that we're incorporating the lessons learned from previous phases and building on this experience within the remaining future phases at Park Hill. The brief for this proposal was to create an exemplar sustainable residential community, landscape-led, with modern and highly sustainable homes, and continue the ongoing reinvention and restoration of this important listed building. We'll be the first to admit that in our initial application, we didn't quite get it right first time. As you'll be aware, the application submitted back in June of this year received a hundred and forty four objections, if not all, most relating to the number and location of the previously proposed car parking spaces, which were set across two plateaus. These two plateaus were originally allocated for parking, as discussed in the two thousand and six approved master plan. In response to this feedback, we re-engaged with the local community, residents group, wall councillors, and also conducted a survey, which was delivered to all residents and commercial tenants, seeking both facts and opinion on the current and future parking provision at Park Hill. And in response to Dave's point, ninety people responded, which reflects twenty five percent of the four hundred and fifty five residential homes. And we did conduct a further consultation online and present the results back to residents, those who tuned in. Feedback was very balanced, and it became apparent that whilst we aspire to create the most sustainable development possible, we also acknowledge that there is a meaningful proportion of current residents who rely on the use of a private car, and a wide range of businesses who rely on the parking provision for visitors, customers and clients. As such, we worked closely with the design team to develop the current revised proposals, which we feel is a design solution that balances the wide variety of opinions and requirements for the majority of residents and visitors. Following this consultation, key changes were made to the design. We reduced the overall car parking area from two of the existing plateaus down to just one, adjacent to the building entrance, increased cycle numbers, committed to EV spaces and a car club, also the bus stop via the section one oh six on Duke Street. We've also retained one of the plateaus previously allocated for parking in the previous application, which will now be retained as green space. Both of these applications are recommended for approval with no statutory objections. The proposals bring a prominent vacant residential building back into meaningful use on a brownfield site in a highly sustainable location. We get more inquiries about Park Hill than any other project. This interest is both national and international, from schools to the best regeneration practitioners worldwide. In conclusion, this application represents the next phase in the longstanding regeneration plan for Park Hill. It'll deliver high-quality homes fit for modern-day living alongside new commercial space for local businesses, all set within a new public realm. The proposals represent sustainable development and the ongoing growth and renewal of this iconic part of Sheffield and the community that lives and works there. We're engaging with a well-known Sheffield-based contractor, and we're gearing up to start construction in Q1 of two thousand and twenty four, subject to approval today. I'll just wrap it up. Park Hill's special, it's unique, and we're passionate about finishing the job we started. I therefore respectfully urge members to follow your officer's recommendation and approve this application today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks.
Will you press the right hand button?
Any?
The right hand button, that's it, thank you. Jacob, I'd like to respond, please.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. So I've just got a few things to note from Mr Watkins' contributions. So I think a lot of the concerns of residents clearly are about the lack of consultation from Urban Splash, and about the events that have taken place, and I can fully appreciate that. I can't really comment on the consultation that took place, because that's outside the planning process, and it is not a material planning consideration. So obviously applicants are encouraged to consult with the community, but it's not mandatory. We, as the local planning authority, have advertised the applications in accordance with statutory requirements, so the consultation or lack of that took place between residents and Urban Splash, the developer, is not a material consideration that can be taken into account in this decision. In terms of cycle use, I would say that what's happened in previous phases is also not a material consideration, although I can confirm that all previous conditions around cycle storage have been discharged in previous phases. For this particular phase, the recommended condition is number twenty eight for the cycle storage. So that would secure full details of cycle storage, and that is prior to the commencement of any landscaping works. So there would be the full rights for the local planning authority to assess those proposals in more detail, and we do consider that more detail is required, and we respect that, but we would take a robust approach to assessing that when that condition is discharged. Similarly, for electric vehicles and car clubs, which are also mentioned, so they're all easily enforceable conditions attached to the recommended approval. In terms of the survey questions, for us, the main thing that we felt we needed to get out of the survey was an impression of car ownership amongst the existing residents. So there were a range of questions in the survey, some related to how much residents valued the green space, et cetera. I think we already got a good impression from the objections that had been submitted directly to us, that those green spaces were valued. So what we really felt the survey needed to do was demonstrate how many car owners there were amongst the existing residents, where they parked their cars. And we did feel that the responses that we got gave us a good enough answer on that to determine that the amended proposals got the balance broadly right. I think that pretty much covers everything. Just another thing about kind of what is a material planning consideration? I guess it's just important to note that you're being asked to consider a planning proposal, rather than the proposal by a particular developer. So anything related to Urban Splash's conduct, or, you know, their motivations, are they wanting to make money from having the extra parking spaces? That's not something that can be considered. It's just the proposed plans and the documents and the conditions that can be considered today. That's all from me, thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. Members' questions, Barbara first.
Thank you, Chair. And really, it's a comment on cycle storage. I'm really pleased that it is being included, but my concern is, there are thirty eight spaces, and the rest will be housed in the individual premises. Now, over the last couple of years, we've had quite a few instances of electric bikes being stored in a property and catching fire. And what worries me is with that if we're encouraging people to store an electric bike within their properties, that actually adds to the fire risk. So I'd actually ask for that to be looked at under the conditions where it says, you know, sort of under twenty eight, of course, full details of how they'll be accommodated in the individual dwellings. And the further concern is that there are two main entrance points to the building, and looking at the plans, it looks as if there's two, are also sort of small ones, I think it's the middle block, is it R, S or something? Two slight ones there. So again, I think consideration should be given to the potential fire risk with electric bikes stored in the premises. And if the only way of accommodating that is by having them outside, or well away from the building, then I'd actually ask for that to be considered. Thank you.
Jacob?
That's all stuff that we can consider at condition discharge stage. I think there's two things around fire safety, it can be a bit of a woolly area as to whether it's something that's really relevant to planning. It's covered mainly in the building regulations, but then also there are certain elements. So I suppose because cycle storage wouldn't be part of the building structure itself, it's maybe more of a management issue for Urban Splash or whoever would be managing the building. But it's something that we'd certainly take into account in terms of assessing, is this cycle storage usable? Is it practical? And we would expect detailed kind of diagrams of any within flat cycle storage to be And we would expect detailed diagrams of any within flat cycle storage to be provided at condition discharge stage. And there's nothing in the condition that would preclude us from requesting additional cycle stores in the landscape if we did feel that that was inadequate. So it could be fully assessed at that stage.
Thank you, Jacob. Laura?
Thank you, Chair. I'm the councillor for Manor Castle and Park Hill falls within my ward. And I've been involved in talking to both urban splashes and developers and the local residents. But I've reframed from commenting on the planning application so that it didn't prejudice my decision-making. I am disappointed that we're losing one of the fields, as I call them. I'm glad that we've at least retained one, but I think a lot of people that I've spoken to have been attracted to Park Hill because of the green spaces. And I do think it is a feature that is very important. So I'm pleased that one area has been retained and I note there is a net increase in green space. So I suppose, you know, I'll have to go with that. I don't believe the cycle storage did fully happen on previous phases. So I do want to make sure that that actually takes place this time.
Is there a question, Laura? It's questions at the moment, not comments. Do you have a question?
Okay. I thought we could comment as well on an application.
Comment next. This is questions.
Okay. The inclusive employment and development plan, Jacob, that is going to be put in place, would Talents Sheffield work with Manor Castle Development Trust to ensure that local people, they have a job finding service and training service? If they know what skills are required beforehand, they could put in place training courses? Because as you know, it's a deprived ward, we've got a high level of worklessness and any opportunities that come out of this, both during the construction phase and with any businesses that locate in there. I would like local people to feel that they benefited. Thank you.
Jacob?
Yeah, thanks councillor. I think the, so obviously the condition does require collaboration with Talents Sheffield. And I think it's really, they're the best body to know which specific local groups should be consulted. So I'd encourage you to approach them if you think that's something that you'd like to facilitate. But I don't think that it necessarily needs to be worded specifically into the condition.
Would you, Jacob, Tony?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you. Yeah, obviously, I think to bring this buildings or these buildings back into use is a fantastic, is a fantastic thing. The question I want to ask is, and I noticed you said 100 affordable homes, are there going to be any affordable rented homes amongst the, those that are here? Thank you.
Jacob?
Yeah, so Steve mentioned affordable housing and I think it was 20% at discount market rent. Was that right? So the reason that's not been covered in my report or presentation is that it's not secured through the planning process. That's an external arrangement that urban splash are coming to. So I'm not able to comment on that and it shouldn't be taken account into the decision because it's not part of the planning process. In terms of the planning assessment, this is a 0% affordable housing market area. So we don't have any policy justification to request that through a section 106 agreement. So that's all outside the planning process and shouldn't be part of the decision-making, I'm afraid.
Thank you, Jacob. Mary?
Thank you, Chair. I have four questions at least here. I'll try to be quick. Has a climate change impact assessment been done on this, on this development? How is the block being heated? What is its climate impact? Is there going to be a reduction in the amount of heat that's needed to heat these dwellings? Does sustainable transport, which in many ways the proposal to reduce the number of car park spaces hinges around, assume that public transport is secure, reliable and affordable? Because that's patently obvious that it's not in this city at the moment. And had the solution of directing the traffic from phase four into onto the estate via Road Street been considered? I'll leave it at that at the moment. Thank you.
Jacob?
Yeah, thanks councillor. So I'll address those in turn. So in terms of climate change impact, heating source, energy, we do have a condition that covers that. I will find the condition number for you now. But that essentially requires a 10% contribution to overall energy needs through renewable or low-carbon sources or the offset with the equivalent amount of energy through a fabric-first approach. So that's condition 15. I've just found it. So that is, in terms of what we can do with our current policies in terms of kind of energy provision and climate change and sustainability, that's what's set out in policy CS 65 of the core strategy and in the climate change SPD, supplementary planning document. So we're not able or we've not got any policy justification to request kind of further climate change impact analysis than that. But it is fully in accordance with policy in terms of seeking to reduce energy demand through renewable sources. So sustainable transport, so there are a few measures set out in the conditions. There would be a travel plan. There's the condition and section 106 agreement, which both cover live bus times displays. The condition would include one within the estate, perhaps in a lobby or in a landscaped area. And then the section 106 agreement would be a legal agreement to improve the Duke Street bus stop by providing a live bus times display there. And so that would improve convenience of public transport. There's not a lot that we could do through a specific planning application to address the affordability of public transport. You know, that's a matter that's not related to this permission or to this recommendation. But there are measures to encourage public transport usage. In terms of accessing any car parking from Road Street, I mean, we're considering the proposal on its own merits. And I think in terms of the impact on the listed building, wildlife, open space and car parking, we do consider it to be acceptable. So there's no real need to consider alternatives if this is acceptable. I think in terms of why there might be limitations as to what you could do from Road Street, the topography is a big consideration. So the green space kind of within the courtyard that you can see on the screen there is a little bit more sloping. So it might be less suited to car parking provision, which would be accessed from Road Street. That would be my kind of initial comment on that. But I think keeping the assessment just to what's actually being proposed as part of this application. Thanks.
Thank you. I'd just like to come back. Yes, do you think that the increasing traffic flow is contrary to the aims of the Clearing Air Zone?
Jacob?
I might ask Helen to come in on this, but I think it's important to remember that they're two separate issues. So obviously we do need to consider air quality. We are considering climate change. Those are material planning considerations. But the Clean Air Zone is not, you know, it's a different area to this specific planning application. And there is a condition as well that will require an air quality assessment, which will ensure that the impact will be acceptable and/or mitigated.
Thank you.
Helen, you want to come in?
Thanks, Chair. Well, I think as Jacob quite rightly says, the Clean Air Zone is sort of a separate issue from this. But I think what I would say is, obviously, with the limited amount of parking and with the measures in terms of accessibility measures in proximity to public transport, proximity to super-tran, proximity to the city centre, it is a development that isn't going to be a huge generator of traffic, which I would say is in support of the Clean Air Zone. Thanks, Chair.
Roger?
Thank you. I'm sorry if I ask the same question as Barbara, but I'm still a bit confused about this one. Would you say there was enough cycle storage provision as asked for by Mr Watkins and the electronic service points? Can you just tell me how many of those there will be? Thank you.
Jacob?
Sorry, by electronic service points, do you mean for cars? Yeah, so through the condition, we'd be securing six electric vehicle charging points and then a further 10%, no, sorry, 40% of the parking spaces would be served by cable routes to facilitate future charging points. Going back to the cycle storage, so in the submission, the revised submission, there is a strategy which sets out the equivalent of at least one cycle parking space per flat. Some of those are within the flats. And then there's also a dedicated cycle store at ground floor level and then some cycle storage in the landscape as well, some of which is covered. So in terms of is it enough, the strategy indicates that it would be policy compliant, but we need to see the detail at condition. So it's a question of really particularly for those spaces that are proposed within the flats, we would at condition discharge stage be assessing whether they are actually sufficiently convenient, if there's enough space for the bikes without compromising on living space in those flats. And then we would obviously reserve the right through that condition to say, if we're unsatisfied with those details, then we'd request an amended submission to ensure that there is enough usable cycle storage.
Roger, Jacob? Members' comments. Laura, you want to comment now?
Sorry about that. I got carried away, Chair. Yeah, I'd just like to say, I think the urban splashes have moved a long way in terms of addressing some of the concerns. I think I'd like to say that when it comes to phase five, which should hopefully be, I think it's got to be completed by March 2025, let's have a better discussion with the tenants from an earlier stage so they can put in an input. It's been quite a lot of to-ing and fro-ing and I think it would be better to start with a clean sheet, rebuild trust and let's hope that we can get a very positive outcome at an early stage for phase five. And I mean that on both sides. What we don't want here is conflict between developers and residents. We want to work together to benefit the whole of what is an absolutely amazing community down there.
Would you, Laura? Tony?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Condition 18 here says, the apartment shall not be used unless a cycle parking accommodation shown on the approved plan that's been provided in accordance with those plans and thereafter, such cycle parking accommodations shall be retained. Mr Watkins raised the point of not being enough and he is concerned that if they're not put in place as it was in the other one, then therefore a condition should be made sure that that is done. Thank you, Chair.
Bernard?
Thank you, Chair. I remain very concerned that a comprehensive climate change impact assessment of the whole development has not been done. I think at the moment, we just don't seem to have the tools to do that properly and I really think we should be doing that in every single development. And we need to look examining the value of that and whether it's actually evidence-based. I do welcome the improvements in the accommodation on the site. I do wish there were more concrete conditions on them actually being, there actually being some more let properties there. And the definition of affordable is only affordable, I think, for, you know, for a small percentage of the city. Many people in the gig economy don't have the ability to be able to put a mortgage package together. I am, remain concerned that the sustainable transport is an issue that's outside the realm of you being able to make a decision here. And I think that's very regrettable. And I do look forward to the day when we will be able to look at this sensibly, rather than this assumption that somehow or other our heads will get knocked against the wall and we suddenly see the light. And yes, unfortunately, therefore, I will be voting against this proposal because I feel that there's a lot more that needs to be done. And I very much empathise with the people here today who've put their concerns forth. I don't think those issues have been adequately addressed. And I do wish we had a better system that weren't so legalistic. So yes, I will be voting against regrettably, but I do think we live in a car-dependent world, city, and we need to move beyond this very quickly because we need to hit 2000. The target of 2030 has been zero-carbon city. And I don't think we're anywhere near that and I don't think this helps very much at all. Thank you.
Chair, can I just come in there? Just a reminder really for members, just in terms of any sort of reasons for refusal. If you are minded to refuse any application, it does need to be based on material planning considerations and/or planning policy. So for instance, in respect of climate change, you've heard from the planning officer that conditions are already there to deal with the climate change issues and believes that the conditions deals with the planning policies we currently have in respect of climate change. So really just a reminder there that, you know, you can't have a vague sort of feeling about these issues that you need to be based on material planning considerations and planning policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicky.
Come back. Could I ask that a condition be put on this that Dave Watkins asked for? That we need to have cycle storage in place and the electric point charging in place in the condition? Thank you.
I think Jacob needs to come in there. I think that is part of a condition, if I remember right.
Yeah, so condition 28 does cover that in terms of cycle storage. For electric vehicles, it's condition 24. So they both require the submission of details either before landscape works or in a condition covering electric vehicles. That's prior to the first occupation of the development. No dwelling shall be occupied until the relevant infrastructure has been provided in accordance with the approved details. So that is an enforceable condition. If there's any specific suggestions that you'd like adding, then we can consider that. But from what you're saying, I think it's already covered.
Yep, Bernard?
I will have to take your word for that because I've looked at this from a fresh and not obviously consulted with local people because I've tried to be objective here. I will have to take that on trust.
Barbara?
Thank you, Chair. I must admit, we went on a site visit yesterday and I was very impressed with the contrast between what's, you know, that block there now, it's phase D and phase two, sorry, phase four and phase two. So I will support it. I have got concerns. I actually, but I do think that the way of reducing, just using one of those areas for car parking facilities is a really good compromise. It acknowledges the fact that we have not got a proper transport infrastructure in place at the moment, which is not part of this. And to me, I think what's often forgotten is that many people use a vehicle to get out of Sheffield, not just get in and around Sheffield, into and around Sheffield. So I think sort of this is a good compromise and I'd be happy to support this. Thank you.
Roger?
Thank you very much. Yes, I agree with what Barbara said. I hope that, you know, we have taken into consideration what Mr Watkins has said and that we will be able to enforce those conditions that you've outlined. You know, the cycle storage and the electronic charging points. So I hope that that will be, because what I'm looking forward to now is the next musical, Standing at Sky Edge Mark II. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I went on the site visit yesterday too and was as impressed by the work that had been done on previous phases. I am particularly pleased about the fact that they're bringing an old building back into reuse and that has significant carbon benefits in my view. I know that's not necessarily a planning consideration, but I am pleased to see that. With regard to the car parking, I think if that car parking wasn't provided, I think we might have difficulty with car parking on the streets and nuisance. So yeah, I'm in favour of this.
Laura?
Final point from me, as I have been doing Bernard, I have been consulting local people and I will continue to work with them throughout the whole phase of the development. So if there are any issues about access to the site, any problems with noise, other issues are tackled early on before it's allowed to deteriorate. So I have my, and I'll work with Urban Splash, so that's the guarantee I'll give.
Thank you, Laura. Right, we'll go to the vote then. Bernard?
I would be voting against.
Tony?
Thank you. I will be voting for.
Yvonne?
For the application, Chair.
Laura?
For the application, Chair.
Roger?
For the application.
Dennis?
For the application.
Barbara?
For the application.
Cliff?
For the application, Chair.
Thank you, that is passed, thank you very much. Right, we now have to move to the vote on the next part of this, which is item eight, the planning application, 2301961, LBC Park Estate, which is the historic part of it. So we don't need to discuss this, we just need to go to the vote. So Bernard?
As before, I will be voting against.
Yeah. Tony?
Yeah, for, for the application.
Yvonne?
For Chair.
Laura?
For the application.
Roger?
For the application.
Roger?
For the application.
For the application.
For the application.
Next application, item eight C, application number 2302687, FBL, site of 340, Liggett Lane, Sheffield, West Town, which is on page 87 of the agenda. I think this one is Sarah. Otherwise she can't vote. We asked you back Laura, because if you weren't here at the first, you wouldn't be able to take part in the rest of it. Thank you. Sarah?
Thank you, Chair. A bit echoey. This application relates to 340 Liggett Lane and plan permission is sought for a three slash four-storey building to form seven apartments with associated landscaping, car parking, bike storage and refuge storage. Next slide, please. This slide shows the red line boundary of the site, so it's located to the north of Liggett Lane, close to the junction with Manchester Road. The site was formerly occupied by a retail unit, but that was demolished several years ago, approximately 2019, and now the site stands vacant. Next slide, please. This slide shows the aerial view of the site. To the north is a housing area, to the west is the Crosspool Tavern, which is a public house, to the east is Liggett Green, which is a small community garden area. It's got trees in it and landscaping, a public footpath and benches in there. And then to the south, sort of south-west along Sandy Gate Road, is a local shopping centre and that local shopping centre allocation extends north and covers the Crosspool Tavern and the application site. Next slide, please. This is a view of the site taken from Liggett Lane, looking directly at the site, which is currently fenced off, as you can see in the image, and you can also see the Crosspool Tavern to the left of the screen there. Next slide, please. This is a view taken from the front of the Crosspool Tavern, looking east towards the site. If you just note those trees within the grass verge to the front of the Crosspool Tavern and there's also a tree, a similar tree to the front of the application site. Next slide, please. This is a view taken from the front of the site, looking towards the local shopping centre, which you can just see towards the left-hand side of the screen there. Again, you can see the grass verge and the street trees. Next slide, please. This is a view taken from the front of the site, looking south towards the housing on the opposite side of Manchester Road. Next slide, please. This is a view taken from Liggett Green, looking towards the site. So the site is at the other side of that landscape strip, which comprises shrubs, trees and bushes. Next slide, please. This is a view taken within the site, so you can see that the site is currently vacant. It's characterised by a mixture of hard surfacing and some self-set low-level vegetation. Next slide, please. This is a view from the front of the site, looking along Liggett Lane. Next slide, please. This is the site location plan, so you can see the red line boundary. The site, the extent of the site runs along the boundary at the full depth of the Crosspool Tavern to the west of the site and then the rear boundary of the site runs parallel to the rear boundary of residential property at 30 Liggett Hall Crescent. The east elevation of the site runs parallel to Liggett Green and also transverses the rear boundaries of numbers 38 and 40 Liggett Hall Crescent. Next slide, please. This image shows the existing site layout. There's not an awful lot to see there, but the thing to note in particular is the trees around the site, so there's no trees within the site, all the trees are located within the Crosspool Tavern or within Liggett Green. Next slide, please. This is the proposed site layout. So the site is proposed to be accessed from Liggett Lane via the existing access which served the former retail unit. That access provides entry to a parking forecourt where seven parking spaces are proposed, so that's one parking space per apartment. The parking area will be set behind a low stone wall, which will carry on that characteristic feature in the area. Then the main footprint of the building extends to roughly in line with the rear elevation of the Crosspool Tavern and beyond that are a series of terraces and a bike store and the terraces are there to account for the rise in land level, so the site rises as you go towards the rear of the site. Next slide, please. These are the building proposed elevations, so the image in the top left-hand of the screen is the front elevation. The building is three stories towards the left-hand side, so that's adjacent to the Crosspool Tavern and then it rises to four stories away from the Crosspool Tavern, so that it provides a stepping height between the Crosspool Tavern and the other side of the site. It's a contemporary design, proposed to be constructed from brick with some cladding at a higher level, with the upper floors of accommodation set within a mansard-style roof. The design is characterised by large windows and balconies, so that all apartments benefit from an external balcony area. Next slide, please. This is the existing site sections, so you can see in the top image there that the site is relatively, so that's taken sort of from the front to the rear of the site. You can see that the site is relatively level for the front, sort of two-thirds, and then it raises fairly steeply towards the rear and is set at a high level in that rear area of the site. And then if you look at the bottom section there, you can see that's taken through the front of the site and that the site is relatively level from east to west. The markings in red there are the outline of a scheme which has previously been granted in planning permission. So in 2020, planning permission was granted for a three-storey development with a pitched roof and that provided five apartments on the site. Next slide, please. This is a street scene elevation, showing the site in context with the Crosspool Tavern. So as mentioned previously, the site, the proposal is three stories adjacent to the Crosspool Tavern, so a similar height to the Crosspool Tavern and then it steps up away from the Crosspool Tavern. And you can, if you look really closely, see the, that red line that we looked at on the previous slide, it shows the previous approval. That is again indicated on that drawing and it shows that this proposal is of a similar scale to the previous approval on the site. Next slide, please. This is a cross-section through the site, so taken, the top one is from, sort of looking from the east and the bottom one is looking from the west and it demonstrates that the site, the building is built on the level area of the site towards the front and then where the land rises to the rear, there's a series of terraces to be formed. The area closest to the building is proposed to be used as an external amenity space for the ground floor apartment. The middle terrace will provide a bike store area and then the upper terrace is shared amenity space for all residents. Next slide, please. These are the floor plans, these are actually the third and, so the third and, hang on a second, so, sorry, the second floor is the, is shown on the left-hand screen, left-hand side of the screen and the third floor is shown on the right-hand side of the screen. So there's two apartments in the second floor and one three-bed apartment at third floor level. Next slide, please. This shows the ground floor and the first floor, so the ground floor is to the left-hand side of the screen and the first floor is on the right-hand side of the screen and it's proposed to construct two, two-bed apartments on each floor there. So I'll just run through the key matters in relation to the proposal. There've been 24 objections in relation to the proposal, two letters of support and one objection from a local councillor. The site is located within a local shopping centre. Whilst retail is a preferred use in a local shopping centre, residential use is acceptable and in this instance, the site is on the edge of the local shopping centre and it's considered that the proposed residential use will not be harmful to the function of the shopping centre. Also, we've granted planning permission for residential development in 2020 and so that has established the principle of using the site for residential uses. In terms of design, the proposal is a contemporary design. The scale steps up from the public house to provide a transition. And whilst the scale in the area is predominantly two stories, it's highlighted that the scale has been established through the 2020 application. The site is located at a wide junction and provides a focal point in the area. The stepping of the building and the use of terraces and balconies will provide good articulation and help to break up the massing and the use of brick and cladding is considered to be acceptable, given the diverse palettes of materials in the locality. The density of the proposal is 116 dwellings per hectare, which is higher than recommended in Core Strategy Policy 26. However, the proposal represents an efficient use of land, it's in a very sustainable location and we're considering this against the lack of a five-year housing land supply. In terms of amenity, the proposals provide a good standard of accommodation, the apartments are large, they all have an external balcony area. The proposal is set away from existing residential properties by adequate distances to ensure that it won't be overbearing or overshadowing or cause a loss of privacy to existing residents. So the separation distance to the dwellings at the rear is approximately 37 metres and the dwellings to the east are set, the main dwellings, so the two-story elements of the properties are set approximately 18 metres from the site boundary. In relation to highways, seven parking spaces are proposed, which is one per unit. That's considered to be acceptable, given the sustainable location, close to public transport and within and next to a local shopping centre. The use of the existing access previously of the retail unit and it's not considered that the use of the site for seven apartments and associated seven vehicles will result in a material increase in the number of vehicle movements using that site access. There's been a review of personal injury accidents in relation to the site access, which shows that there's no accidents which have been recorded within, I believe, the last 23 years, which suggests that it's not a particularly problematic site access. In relation to landscaping, as was shown previously, there's trees surrounding the site but not within the site. All the trees are to be retained, the majority of them are, won't be affected at all by the proposal, so the trees within the Liggett Green site to the east, their root protection areas are outside of the developable area. There are some trees overhanging at the site to the rear, which are within the curtilage of the pub and they will need to be pruned, but that won't be significant and there'll need to be some pruning of hedgerows. Aside from that, there'll be no impact. The tree to the front of the site, which is in the grass verge, is a sycamore tree and obviously has high immunity value, especially coupled with the other sycamore trees along that frontage. There's been a tree report, which has assessed the potential impact on that tree and again, it's found to be, there's no concerns about the impact on that tree, but there is a condition proposed to require details of the protection of that tree and we would require details of how the hard surfacing will be constructed because the front corner of the hard surfacing does encroach slightly within the root protection area, but it also does at the moment. In terms of biodiversity, there's minimal value to the site at present and an increase will be secured by condition number four. So in summary, the tilt and balance is in play and so permission should be granted unless adverse impacts significantly and demonstrably outweigh the benefits. In this instance, there's not considered to be significant adverse impacts and so it's recommended that permission is granted. I would just draw attention to the supplementary report and that is, there's an additional representation that's been received. The points raised in that representation relate predominantly to highways issues, concerns about the safety of the site access. Those issues have been addressed in the officer report and are similar to objections raised through previous objectors. There is an additional issue that's been raised, a question about affordable housing and whether any affordable housing will be provided. However, this scheme is for seven units and affordable housing is only required for developments of 15 or more units and that's in line with the relevant policy. There's also another condition being proposed, which was referenced in the officer report but omitted through error and that's just about ensuring that the roof at the third floor level isn't used as an amenity area. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. We have two speakers on this application and the first one is Adam Bacon. If you come to one of the desks, please, Adam. Yep, you've got five minutes.
Right, so my name's Adam Bacon, I live at number 40 Liggett Hall Crescent, which is just immediately.
just immediately behind the development. So I'm here to represent myself and 23 objectors, or 23, 24 is it, I'm not sure. So yeah, so we don't object to the development in principle, but we just object to the sheer size and the scale, which is disproportionate in this residential area. And so we'd like the planning committee to reject the application for the following reasons. First, in the detrimental impact on the local built environment, the applicant's design and access statement outlines a proposed development density of 116 density per hectare, 116, which is in breach of the CS26 of the Sheffield Core Strategy, which asks for between 30 and 50 dph, it's a bit of a difference. So not that we're standing at the Brownfield site, it's a significant and excessive density in a suburban context. It's between 42 and 65% above the council's policy guidance. Little justification for this, despite the pre-application concerns of the planning officer, they seem to have ignored their own concerns. So we feel this is a material breach of the council's policy and that this sets a precedent so large it renders the policy worthless. We think there's weak site analysis, the rear elevation of the building has commanding onerous views over the neighbouring properties, severely compromising privacy, particularly in relation to the fourth mansard floor and lower balconies. And the council's policy premeditates CS31 about existing character of the area, while the proposed development would undermine the local character through its incongruous massing height and form. And the four stories in height of the development were the largest building in Crosspool and a new damaging precedent will have been implemented. So in relation, yeah, sorry, in relation to the submitted evidence, there doesn't seem to be any much concern about access and travel impact assessment and we continue to be, as local residents, concerned about this because we see what happens on that pavement all the time. So particularly pedestrian safety on that and the planning committee should note that previous commercial ventures have been declined on the safety grounds, just to note. And we continue to view these as real concerns for highway and pedestrian safety. So it's a small car park, very limited manoeuvring possibilities and inevitably they'll be coming onto the pavement, which is immediately onto the junction of Manchester Road, Lidget Lane, Sandigate, with all the traffic swirling around. And this is a school run, so this is in the morning and the afternoon, the school runs to Lidget, Infants Juniors, Taptown Secondary School and King Edward Secondary School are all going along there and at the same time rush hour, loads and loads of traffic. So and the cars are going to have to go across the pavements to access the property and there's just the potential for accidents involving children especially. Cars are going to be preoccupied by getting off the road and this is going to go straight onto the pavement. And also, obviously, it's a small car park and it's insufficient parking, so there's all the usual issues about just creating further parking problems in the locality. So in conclusion, we object to this development in principle. No, not, sorry, not the principle, this specific proposal, because that overlooks and compromises local residents' privacy, too large and it dominates the local area, it's out of character with the local area, it's in breach of CS26 of the Sheffield Core Strategy and it's very prejudicial to highway safety. So we ask that the planning committee reject the application. Thank you.
Thank you Adam. Our next speaker for the application is Alistair Struthers, please. And again, you have five minutes, Alistair, thank you.
Thank you. My name is Alistair Struthers, I'm the project architect who's worked on the design and also responsible for the subsequent planning submission. My practice, Peak Architects, are a well-known housing architects in the city and we're based in Brimhall, about 10 minutes from the site itself. Following the officer's report and recommendation for approval, I'm going to provide some supporting narrative on several of the key items, such as the design approach, the brief, massing, architectural style and technical aspects as well. I trust these will provide clarification and reassurance to both the members and public in respect of the comments raised. With regards to the brief, the housing stock in the area is predominantly three to five beds semi-detached or larger fully detached homes and as such, there's high demand for this type of development, particularly for those looking to downsize in the local area. As noted in the officer's report, the site's planning history includes an approved 2017 scheme for six apartments and an extant planning permission for a very similar five-unit apartment block. Whilst the clients could have proceeded to activate those permissions, they instead instructed us to investigate how to improve the quality of the design of those schemes to ensure that they address the context of the site, the adjacent park and the style. With regards to the massing, the previous planning permission was for a three-storey plus pitched apartment block, which established the guidelines for the acceptable massing on the site. And it should be noted that the proposed scheme does not exceed the height of that previously approved scheme. Furthermore, whilst the areas to the north and south are dominated by two-story plus pitch houses, the site's position on a prominent corner of Manchester Road in the Crosspool local shopping district reassured us that it was reasonable to maintain the four-story approved in the previous application. This approach was also further supported by our review of the context, which revealed examples of four-story apartments in the local area, such as 31 to 39 Sandigate Road and King Score 358 Manchester Road. With regard to the architectural character and also scale, because the way we approached it, both are relevant to one another. In addition to the reduced height when compared to the previous application, the proposal seeks to create a more sympathetic relationship with the context. We were concerned about the style and approach of the previous application and sought to rectify that. To promote a subservient relationship with the adjacent Crosspool Tavern, as the officer introduced the scheme, the proposal is set back from the tavern's front elevation by four metres and the top floor, the fourth floor mansard, is set back an additional four stories. The height of the proposal on the corner with the tavern will therefore match the height of the tavern's roof. To further reduce the impact of the massing, the top floor has been designed as a recessed mansard-style roof and a darker metal sheet cladding. The prominent view from Sandigate Road was a key driver for the proposal's form and architecture. It's a road which I drive down almost every day and so I'm very aware kind of as I'm driving down that road. The site is framed by the shops on either sides with the Crosspool Tavern and then the trees lining Lidget Green to the right-hand side. The design therefore sought to create a sensitive corner adjacent to Lidget Green, which was achieved by resetting the building line two metres on that corner, so that's the right-hand corner that you can see on the plan, where the balconies are situated. And also champering the corner, which creates the effect of the building stepped back and its shoulder is turned away, which reduces the prominence of the building and the scale when considered against the adjacent trees and that's important view within the context. With regards to the technical aspects, the officer's report has comprehensively addressed the concerns of compliance with regard to impact on the amenity of the neighbours, the parking, highway safety, density and trees. However, I'd like to emphasise and clarify just two points. The first one is the arboricultural report identifies the sycamore tree on Lidget Lane to the front of the building as potentially suffering decay, but I would like to clarify that our proposal seeks to retain and do no worse to the trees at all. The second point is to do with the amenity on the existing neighbours.
You've told it up, thank you Adam, Alistair.
Okay, can I finish the points or?
Yeah, I'll let you finish off.
Thanks.
It's very mine you've got.
I'll go quick, I'll go quick. So the amenity has been considered throughout the design process with the compliance overlooking distances exceeding what is required within policy and the building steps back two metres, even more than the previous application which was approved. So this permission is seeking to improve that compared to the previous one. I think I'll leave it there, but thank you for the time.
Thank you Alistair. Can you just turn the button off please? Just press, yeah. Thank you very much. Sarah, would you like to?
Thank you Chair. So yeah, just to respond to a few points made by Mr Bacon, although I think I probably covered them in my initial presentation, but just to pick those up again. So in terms of density, yes, it is a higher density than Core Strategy Policy, but that policy does allow for exceptions to be made. And critically on this site, it's considered that the efficient use of land, which obviously is developing at a grace of density, on a Brownfield site in a really sustainable location meets the requirements of the MPPF, which sets out that we should be making efficient use of sites and it will add to the five-year housing land supply which we haven't got at the moment. In terms of overlooking, I did mention separation distances, so there are windows in the rear elevation which will face number 30 and they're 37 metres away from the rear boundary, which is in excess of the 21 metres recommended in our SPG. In terms of overlooking to Mr Bacon's property at number 40, the building doesn't extend directly in front of the boundary of number 40, so it's set in front of the actual boundary. There are some windows in the side elevation that they will, the view of that from those will be over Lidget Green, although it's expected that that view will be predominantly screened by the trees along that boundary. The windows in the rear elevation will be at such an angle in relation to number 30 and number 40, that it's not considered that they will cause unacceptable overlooking and the separation distances again are such that they comply with the relevant guidelines. In terms of character, the height is three to four stories as discussed, but that height is no greater than we've previously approved and it's a site that's on a wide corner and it's considered that it can take the scale in this particular instance. In terms of highways, just reiterate that it's an existing site access that's being used and the amount of vehicle traffic is not anticipated to be any greater than would have been seen in association with the previous retail use or indeed with the previous approvals for residential development which have been granted on the site. The vehicles can enter the site in a forward gear and then there's sufficient turning area within the parking courtyard to be able to turn around and exit in a forward gear as well, which coupled with the visibility, is considered that there won't be any safety issues.
Thank you Sarah. Do you have any members' questions? Mary?
Yes, I am very concerned about the issue of child safety in the area. Do you feel, could you reiterate your feeling that it isn't a concern?
Sarah?
I'm going to hand the highways questions to Helen.
Thanks Chair. Yeah, as Sarah said, it's an existing access, an existing access that we have at least 23 years' data for, where there's been no accidents with pedestrians or vehicles. The level of traffic I would suggest with this development would be lower than was previously the case. There's a decent footway width for all pedestrians to use, visibility is good. So I think based on the fact that there is no evidence of any accidents, the traffic generation is likely to be lower than previously. Visibility as you're coming out of the site is good. I think it is a safe access to use for this level of development. Thanks Chair.
Thanks Helen.
Yeah, we actually questioned about the highway safety on the site yesterday and I suppose I accept what Helen says, but there's no measures that we can actually ask for reasonably just to slow traffic down at that junction, is there?
Chair, no there isn't. I think if I can just give you an idea of the level of traffic that we're talking about, we're talking about potentially 30 movements over a 12-hour period. So in the peak, that's probably two to three vehicular movements over an hour. That doesn't justify unfortunately any highway alterations. Thanks Chair.
Yes, sorry, just to come back on that, I understand those figures, but my concern is what happens when schools, is it around the school leaving and starting day? Because that's, those are the periods that are most, where children are most at risk because we can average it across the whole day, but actually there's times when there are more children walking along the pavement at that point.
Chair, the 30 movements is over the whole day. What you generally look at would be in the peak hour, which would be sort of coincide when children were going to and from school, is probably two to three vehicles leaving that site. I don't think that is going to be a safety risk for children. As I say, if they were coming out, if they were coming out blind, they couldn't see anything if there wasn't an established access there, you might be looking to run something, but the visibility is good, it's an established access. The car parking layout is perfectly adequate to ensure that people can enter and exit in a forward gear, which wasn't always the case previously. So I don't believe that it's a highway safety issue or pedestrian safety issue at any time of day. Thanks Chair.
Thank you. My other question is about the possibility of putting a TPO on the sycamore tree. My experience of sycamore trees is they grow very, very quickly and I would like there to be some sort of report from a street specialist to look at that before insisting there should be a TPO, but I think it needs to be considered. Can it be considered please?
We can refer it to our colleagues and ask them to have a look at it and see if it would be suitable for a TPO, but it wouldn't, that couldn't really be formed the basis of any decisions on this application, but we will refer it.
Thank you.
Thank you Chair. Yeah, given the approval given to the previous plans of where the building was of similar height, does that in any way bind us with regard to the decision on this one?
Sarah?
It is a material consideration because that, we have considered that to be acceptable in the past, so it's certainly something that we should be looking at as a material consideration with this application.
Yes, I will support this and it's mainly, well partly, because it is an opportunity for people to downsize because there's a huge lack of such places in our general area. And so yeah, I'm taking on board Mr Bacon's concerns, but on the whole, I'm going to support it, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay.
Yeah, I just have concern about the scale of this on that site. It will be taller than surrounding buildings. I'm sort of trying to get my head around, I mean, sometimes it can look good to have a tall building on a corner. Sometimes you want it to sort of be at the same height as adjacent buildings and I'm very torn by that factor. I'm also a little bit concerned about the traffic going in and out, it's a junction that I use regularly. I think it could be a little bit difficult and I think there could be... Um ah it it, I think it could be a little bit difficult and I think there could be. Well, I think you might have to advise residents to exit and and enter by particular routes to avoid difficult turns. Um which could be difficult, you know, there there there's traffic coming at you from four 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 sides there, it's 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 not, it's not that easy. So I'm 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 very torn about this.
Okay, anyone else? Murder?
Um I will be supporting this application in spite of my concerns about safety, road safety. For pedestrians particularly, and also my concern about the lack of housing in the city and homes in the city. That can be afforded by the average person in the city, where most building, most properties are way beyond. The the scope of most people in the city, so I remain concerned that this isn't gonna actually address the housing crisis. Which is the the most vulnerable in our city, so that's my concern in in agreeing to this, thank you.
Anyone else? No, can we vote for the vote then please? Murder?
Support?
Four.
Yeah, four, thanks Chair.
Four Chair.
Four Chair.
Four Chair.
Four Chair.
Four Chair.
Abstain Chair. Abstain.
Thank you, that is passed, thank you. Are members happy to carry on? Yeah, they're inclined we don't have the toilet facilities. Yeah, carry on, thank you. Right, the next item is item eight D, finding application number two-three zero-zero-three-three-four. Throw full, Sportsman, one-five-six, Donald Road, Sheffield, S nine, five A D. This is yours again Sarah?
Yeah.
Thank you Chair. Uh this application relates to uh the Sportsman's pub on Donald Road. Um and planning permission is sought for a change of use from the public house to create sixteen, a sixteen-bed uh house in multiple occupation. Um it's also proposed to retain a rear dormer which has recently been constructed. And to construct a new single-story side extension, the application has been amended during the course of the application. Uh from a nineteen-bed HMO to a sixteen-bed HMO, next slide please. This site, uh this slide shows the red line boundary of the site, um which is a former pub on Donald Road, which has been been vacant for approximately one year. Uh the site is located to the south of Donald Road and it's bounded by Wilfrid Road to the west and Bridport Road to the east, next slide please. This slide shows the aerial image of the site, uh there's residential dwellings to the north. Industrial uses to the west, which you can see there with um lots of parked cars, that's the industrial use. Um there's a pub immediately to the east, uh which is, which has be, has permission to be converted to a nursery. Although um on a site visit it looked as though it was uh currently vacant. Um and then to the south is the site, um is Donald Park, next slide please. This image shows the front of the property, um it's an attractive red brick Victorian property. Um it looks like it's recently undergone some modernisation, the windows have been replaced in the front. Um and the dormer windows to the front have been refurbished as well, uh but these works wouldn't have required planning permission, next slide. This is a view from Donald Road, um it's uh you can see the pub in the context of the adjacent former pub. Um which is the cream building uh there, um next slide please. This is another view from Donald Road but from the other side. Um the area uh to the side of the building, um which you can make out, there's some sort of stone pillars. Um on the rendered elevation of the building is where the proposed side extension is, next slide. This is a view taken from Wilfrid Road, looking towards the side elevation of the building, again, that rendered elevation. Is where the single-story side extension is proposed, next slide please. This is a view taken from the rear of the site, um across some of the open space area to the rear of the site. Uh you can see that the dormer window there that's been constructed and for which retrospective planning permission is sought. Next slide please. Uh another image of the rear taken from a slightly different viewpoint and again you can see that uh dormer window on the rear elevation there. Next slide please, this is a closer view of the side elevation um and the dormer window to the rear of the site. Next slide please, and this is a close uh view of the area where the side extension is proposed, next slide please. Uh this gives a bit more context showing uh the just the side of the building there on the left-hand side of the screen. And if you look um to the right-hand side of the screen, you can see uh the the dwellings there, they're the nearest dwellings and they're approximately forty metres away from the site. Um and then uh in the background where the bin lorry is, that's where the industrial site starts, next slide please. Um this is the site location plan, um. It um it shows that the uh the red line boundary goes around the public house and the curtilage of uh the site, which is a small yard to the rear. Next slide please. These are the proposed floor plans, so um the top of the screen is the proposed ground floor plan. Um you can see that the um the area to the left of that is where the new extension is and that will provide a communal. Um living kitchen area, there's also another kitchen area proposed at ground floor. Um and uh five bedrooms, and then at first floor level, um there is. Um it's proposed to have seven en suite bedrooms, next slide please. This shows the the uh the area in the roof, um and that's proposed to be uh three en suite bedrooms, so that's taking the total up to sixteen bedrooms. Next slide please. These are the elevations, so the top image is uh the front elevation as existing. Uh and you can make out the side extension there, so it's a single-story flat roof extension. Proposed to be constructed from red brick to match the existing public house, it's a very simple design. Set back slightly from the front elevation to ensure that it um appears subservient to the original building. Um and then the bottom image shows the rear dormer window which we've looked at in photographs as well, next slide please. Uh these are the side elevations, so the top image shows the uh side extension which does extend uh slightly beyond the rear elevation. And you can also make out the dormer window um within the roof space there as well. Um so in relation to the key matters, um. I mentioned previously that amended plans have been received during the course of the application to reduce the number of bed spaces from nineteen to sixteen. Uh a total of thirty-eight objections have been received, um and one councillor objection as well. Um the site is located within an open space area, um along with the with Donald Park to the rear. However, the site doesn't currently form an open, um have an open space function. Um and the change of use to a HMO wouldn't um result in the loss of any open space associated with either. Um this site or and it wouldn't uh result um in any loss of open space in the uh park to the rear of the site either. Consideration has been given to um the pub as a community facility, um the pub has been closed for a year. Um and there's another pub within half a mile, uh within half-mile distance, so there is an alternative choice there. Um only one letter after the thirty-eight received mentions um the loss of the pub as a community facility. Which indicates that its value in terms of um of terms of a community facility um isn't particularly high. Um and so in relation to that, it's considered that it's lost, is acceptable. Um also, it's not registered as an asset of community value. Uh in relation to design, the building is an attractive Victorian building, but it's not a designated um or non-designated heritage asset. There are some listed buildings uh to the north of, sorry, to the west of the site within that industrial area which I indicated on the um slides previously. Um there are two listed buildings and a scheduled ancient monument within that industrial area. Uh however, this uh site is well separated from those buildings and it's not considered to have any impact on heritage assets. The rear dormer window is already constructed, as you could see from the images, um it is large, um which isn't ideal. Um however, it's finished in dark lading, it's set um down from the ridge, it's set up from the eaves and it's set in from the sides. Which reduces its prominence, um and the use of the dark lading helps it to blend with the roof. The side extension is of a simple design, uh it's within the established curtilage, um and it's not considered to detract from the appearance of the property. In relation to amenity, the nearest housing is located to the north of the site, it's acknowledged that this is a large HMO. Um however, it will serve a residential function and that residential function in itself is compatible with the residential character of the area to the north. Given its size, it's noted that there will be a number of comings and goings associated with the use, however, it's highlighted that this site was previously used as a public house. Um and there would be uh comings and goings associated with use as a public house. Um so in terms of um movements and general disturbance, it's not considered that it would have a greater impact uh than the former use as a pub. A number of objections have raised concerns about um antisocial behaviour and crime and fear of crime. However, there's no evidence to suggest that this proposal would lead to antisocial behaviour or crime. Um and there's no evidence to suggest that HMOs in general result in greater crime levels. Um any issues that did occur in relation to these matters would be um matters for the relevant authorities. So um the police or or other relevant authorities in each specific instance. Uh the accommodation proposes sixteen um bed spaces, um the sizes of the bedrooms range from nine-point-eight square metres to twenty-two square metres. Um with an average of fourteen square metres, although some of the rooms are small, um they all have space for a bed, um some storage and a desk. They all benefit from natural light and outlook and the room sizes exceed the minimum space standards. Um required under a HMO licence, which is six-point-five-one square metres for a single bed space. Um hi- in terms of highways, there's no off-street parking associated with the site, um as there was no off-street parking associated with the the pub. Um and there's no potential to provide any off-street parking within the curtilage of the site, however, it's a sustainable location. Um it's two-hundred metres to the nearest bus stop, seven-hundred metres to the nearest tram stop and it's close to a local uh centre, so within walking distance. Parking is available on streets, um and it's noted that um the pub would have had parking associated with it in a similar manner. Um such that the impact is not considered to be materially greater than the previous use. The site falls within flood zone two, where there's a medium probability of flooding. Um and that's because Donald Road itself acts as an overland flow um for for floodwater. Um but only a part of the site is in flood zone two, so the rear of the site, the yard area and the rear access is not within flood zone. So um there is, uh that means that there can be um a safe escape route in events of flooding. Um people will be able to go out through the rear access, which is not within the flood zone. Um the flood risk assessment has been submitted, um and some mitigation resilience measures are proposed to be built into the proposal. Um the um in terms of vulnerability of the proposed use to flooding. Um the public house would be classed as a more vulnerable use, as would the um residential use. Um and such uses are acceptable within flood zone two as set out in um government guidance and policies. Um so uh the tilted, again, the tilted balance is in play. Um and the proposal will lead to a very small contribution to the housing land supply. Um the officer recommendation is for approval, and there is a supplementary, which I'll just run through quickly. Um and that is uh that we have had an additional response from the Environment Agency. Who have, um they had previously objected to the scheme, but now they have removed that objection subject to two conditions. The first of which requires the development to be constructed in accordance with the flood risk assessment and the mitigation measures set out. Um and the second condition states uh requires the development to not be built. Any closer to the Kirk Bridge Dyke culvert um than is shown on the um approved plans. Um there's also a clarification on the report, um reference was made to the wrong uh paragraph of the MPPF in relation to the highway section, so. Um it referenced paragraph one oh eight and one oh nine when it should have been one ten and one eleven.
Just now, um yeah, Barbara?
Oh, sorry, yesterday asked about the cellar and you were going to get some clarification on that because again, if it's in a flood zone, I was a bit concerned that. Even though I can see from the details, it's not going to be habitable space, it is still a space underneath. And I suppose the second query is because it is a flat roof, is there any chance that we could ask for a cedum roof on there or is that um a step too far?
Sarah?
Thank you for that, um so yeah, I did, we did go back to the um agent and we asked if there was a basement and he did clarify that there is a basement on the site. Um but he also clarified that that was not proposed to be to be used at all for for um accommodation associated with the HMO, so. Uh obviously it's already there and it already functions as a a basement or cellar, um and it's proposed to have that same sort of basement function. Um going forwards, um in relation to the flat roof, it would be nice, wouldn't it? Um but I don't think that um the scale of the development would allow us to ask for that in this instance.
Tony?
Yeah, a couple of points really, uh the first one is about the 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 uh. Communal facilities, uh they don't seem to be uh sufficient. Uh and it would be better if we could have less rooms and and more more areas for for communal use, that's one point. And the other point is I'm I'm very concerned about the the Donald area is 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 an area that's going to be developing. And uh because there's a lot of derelict stuff down there, so we're gonna be developing that area, I'm sure, at some point. And with there not being car parking facilities uh for for these, for this this particular development. It's going to be taking up spaces on the road and then if anything is developed further down the line. It's going to cause problems for companies or whatever they're ever developing down there, so I really think. There should, there there should be some sort of provision for car parking, thank you, thank you Chair.
Thank you, so in terms of communal facilities, um there is one very large kitchen and living space and then another secondary smaller kitchen. All at ground floor level, um in relation to the sizes of those, so the the proposal is for a house in multiple occupation. Um and a house in multiple occupation requires a licence, a HMO licence, which is um a separate process um that housing housing standards would would deal with. Um but to get a um a licence, you would require require certain um standards to be met. Um and I believe that as part of that, they would look at the amount of communal space per bed space amongst many other things, uh which include. Sort of ratios of of cooking facilities, um ratios of of storage facilities in communal areas. Um ratios of 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 washing facilities, so the sort of um acceptability of communal space. Um in relation to the number of bed spaces would be something which um would be considered as part of that licence. And in planning terms, obviously we can, we can look at um sort of standards of amenity. Um the spaces are quite large, the communal spaces are quite large. Um and um ultimately, the people that were were going to live in these places would would be deciding whether they were happy with that kind of accommodation. Um sorry, and then parking, I was gonna pass parking over to Helen.
Helen?
Thanks Chair, um yeah, I agree ideally that that there would be some parking with it. Um I think the thing is that for um house and multiple occupation, strangely enough, up to sixteen. Uh bed spaces, shall we say, the parking guidelines are one space per four, sorry, yeah, four to eight bedrooms. So on that basis, you'd be looking at, you know, two to two to three space, it's sorry, two to four spaces. That wouldn't be much more of, in fact, if if at all, than we would require for a public house. And I think even if we were sort of saying, well, we're discarding the fact that there was a pub there or anything like that, we we. we couldn't demonstrate that the level of parking demand that's likely to be generated would be a significant highway safety issue. I think it's Bridport Road to the side that would quite easily accommodate that level of traffic. So whilst I agree with you, it's not the ideal situation, it wouldn't justify refusal. Thanks, Chair.
Yeah, yes, I think we went on a visit yesterday. And with regards to the parking, we all felt going on Bridford Road to look round the property, there wouldn't be any need for any. There would be sufficient parking, turning space on that little side street that goes on to a park at the back anyway. So you've got lots of amenity there and a small amount of parking. And the nearest bus stop was just by the Baptist Church across the road. So there was plenty of scope for travelling around. And we did look at it. And regards to the cellar, if it's the main road that is going to take the flow of water, the air bricks aren't very far up from the actual level of the pavement. So the cellar will get flooded. And there is the big space at the side on Bridford Road where they obviously took the barrels in. That would probably be higher than the water level, but the air bricks in the building itself wouldn't be. They're quite low down at the front of the building.
Yeah, sorry, you're still on. Thank you. Yeah, we did note that the air bricks were basically set just above pavement level, weren't they? So potentially, yes, there would be some flooding. It is in a flood zone, and there would be some flooding of that basement area, but it's not to be used as a habitable accommodation. And obviously, it will flood now at the moment as well. So there's not really much, in terms of a material difference, there's not really much of a difference between it flooding now in association with a pub or flooding if it's used, you know, not used as a basement for the HMO as well.
Can I just say, if you were worried about flooding with a pub, and you've got your barrels and your stock downstairs, you would have a pump, and you would be taking the water out. You wouldn't just leave everything to rot. And if getting these people in, and I say, we're saying to them, "And we've got storage space in the bottom if you want to store some stuff", and that will then get ruined. I think there should be some plan to deal with the flooding in the basement.
So, yeah, it's a difficult one. And I know you're concerned, but we've asked the question, will it be used in association with the property? And they've said no for accommodation. They are aware that it's in a flood zone. The management will be aware that it's in a flood zone. They've submitted this flood risk assessment. So it's sort of at their own risk if they store things there?
Got this next one.
Yeah, can we actually insist that they install a pump as part of the conditions?
No, I don't think that would be proportionate, because it's not being used as a habitable accommodation.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Some of the objections relate to its use as an HMO, and I can understand that. Is that a material consideration that we can take into account?
So the use of it as a HMO in and of itself, you know, you need to consider whether that use is appropriate in that area. If you could expand upon what particular concerns that would probably be used?
Okay. I wouldn't say from the sizes of the, you know, the whole general nature of things, you know, the size of the rooms, that it's going to be high quality, if we put it like that. And I think there might be concerns that it might be used for people who have difficulties and need support and could be a problem in the community. And I think those are the sorts of things that worry people sometimes. You know, how can that be addressed?
So in terms of sizes, as I mentioned previously, all the room sizes comply with the minimum requirements for the HMO licence, and they would need a HMO licence as well. In terms of who would use the development, obviously, if we're granting permission for a HMO, the definition of a HMO is use of a property for six or more people who are unrelated, living together as a household using shared facilities. Beyond that, in terms of who uses it, we really would have no control over who uses it. In terms of concerns about antisocial behaviours, as I mentioned before, and potential concerns about, you know, that kind of thing, again, there's no evidence to suggest that use as a HMO would result in antisocial behaviour or crime or anything of that nature. So in this instance, I don't think there's anything really to go further with that. And if there were issues, then they would be dealt with by the relevant authorities.
Yes, can we finish? Yeah, to continue with the issue about the cellar. Many houses in Sheffield have cellars. And many of them are, most of them, to my knowledge, without being tamped, are damp. We use a humidifier in our house. And you keep it dry in order to stop damp and moisture and mould growing in the rest of the house, in the structure of the rest of the house. I think we do need some much more assurance that that's not going to happen here. And obviously, the issue of flooding will either, you know, will create a big damp problem here that may be lasting for the structure. So I've got one other question, which I'll come back to.
Yeah, I think in terms of potential damp and that kind of thing, and the use of the cellar, as I said, they are aware that it's in a flood zone. So it's really a management issue as to how they use that space and to how they deal with any potential issues that arise in terms of damp. But I don't think there's anything that we could do from a planning perspective to, you know, require anything, any particular measures to reduce that specific issue.
I'm quite concerned with that response, because we have got a big issue with damp and mould in the city, you know, the impact on people's health. But I'll move on anyway. And as you say, it's outside the remit of this committee. I'm concerned in material planning considerations on one one six about there being just one single staircase. Is this sufficient for this number of people in the house?
I believe that matters of fire safety are dealt with as part of the HMO licence, which they would need to have as well. So it will be dealt with under those regulations.
Thank you. And then the square footage of the rooms, same page. Square footage of the rooms does not meet the recommended size for their living area under a HMO licence. Is that actually the case? Or is the legislation going to be coming in to actually change that? So the people's living area is going to be bigger? So that it will allow, you know, more people, more room in their homes? Is that something we can consider here? Or are we already at the limit here of how small they can be?
So the HMO licence, which is obviously a separate process, a separate legislation, but having looked at that, the minimum room size is six point five square metres, and these do exceed that minimum requirement. I suppose if something happened and they couldn't get their licence, and, you know, something happened and it didn't meet the requirements, then they would need to come back to us and try and make amendments to make sure what they were proposing under the licence aligned with the planning permission as well.
Thank you.
Have we no idea what it's likely to be used for? And if it was to be used for a managed hostel, would that affect our decision on a planning application?
Thank you. So as I mentioned before, the definition of a HMO is six or more people living together, using some shared facilities without a relationship. So we have no control over who would use it, and we wouldn't be able to put any controls on who would use it either.
HMO, I'm aware of the legislation. It's not the HMO. It's the difference between a house in multiple occupation and a hostel, such as a probation hostel. Are they classed differently? And I'll remember to turn it off this time.
So what we're looking at here is a HMO, so a house in multiple occupation. That's what they've applied for. Let me just check something. Sorry, thank you for waiting. A hostel is a different, it's sui generis. HMO is sui generis, and a hostel is sui generis. But you can't switch between different sui generis uses. So it would need permission for a hostel.
If we're giving planning permission for a HMO, and then it was wanting to be used as a hostel, would we need to apply for a change of use? And if it was refused? I don't know really. But if it was going to be a hostel, we could put residents' minds at rest that it would have to have a change of use, which wouldn't be automatically granted, would it?
So, yeah. It would require a change of use, which would require a planning permission. And obviously, that will be determined on its merits at the time of the application being submitted.
Anyone else? Well, can we move to the vote then, please? Mira? Comments? Good morning.
Thank you, Chair. I know we're here to apply the planning legislation, and it was made very clear to us yesterday that, sort of, you know, we can pass this, but it is up to HMO to decide on its suitability for that purpose. And there could be changes if it wasn't suitable. So I'm reassured on that, that I'm happy to support this as a planning application for the change of use. And I did like the fact that it was preserving some of the original features, certainly externally, in relation to the fact that it is very close to some listed buildings further up. So I felt that maintaining the fabric of the building certainly was, in the future, going to help enhance the area. So I'm hoping that, sort of, you know, whatever happens after, well, I certainly will support it. Whatever happens will end up being a positive move for the area. Thank you.
Thank you. I will be voting against, because I'm concerned still about the problems of flooding and the dampness of a building like this that will affect its physical material structure. So that's why I'll be voting the way I will, which will be against. I just feel that we're in danger of giving the go ahead to buildings that are only sort of marginally habitable.
Anyone else? Move to the vote then, please.
Against. For.
For, Chair.
For, Chair.
Oh, for, Chair.
For, Chair.
For, Chair.
For, Chair.
Thank you, that is passed. Thank you very much. Item nine of the agenda. It's a record of planning appeal submissions and decisions. Page one three, what are the agenda? Do we have anything?
Nothing to report, Chair, unless anybody has any questions.
No.
There was one. It was the fact that one appeal for a driveway access was refused. And I think it was next door, was allowed. So can you explain that, please? It just confused me.
Well, there were different inspectors for each decision. And yes, you're right. One determined that the off-street parking area would be, or that the cumulative effect of a further parking space would have a detrimental effect on the character. While the other one decided that actually the addition of a similar feature wouldn't harm the character of the area. I can't comment anymore.
Well, that's going to enhance community relations, isn't it? Neighbor wars, thank you.
I can turn, date down next meeting. This is December, two P M. Thank you very much. Just before you all go, we have Andrew on the back. He sat there quietly. Some of us met him yesterday, that he'd taken the place...